Oh, these are too old, I think. Okay, I guess we're ready, everybody. A call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville, Tuesday, October 8th, 2013, and we'll start with roll call.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Dos has been excused. Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
And Eileen Nichols.
First order of business this evening is a ceremonial swearing-in of our new police officer.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest officer, Candace Cook. She comes to us by way of Judah, Wisconsin. She's a proud UWP grad and a product of the Southwest Tech recruit school.
She nervous still, didn't she?
Everybody's watching.
Hi, state your name.
I, Candace Cook.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer?
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully?
And will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office?
Discharge the duties of said office?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Got one other piece of information I wanted to share with you folks. We had the resolution of a federal murder investigation, an overdose case that occurred on, actually, the totality occurred on July 4th, 2012, and as these things often do, it took quite a while to resolve it. But typed up a little synopsis here. On September 30th, 2013, Alvin Briggs, the suspect in this matter, was sentenced in federal court in Iowa to 30 years in prison for selling heroin to a Platteville area resident who subsequently died of a drug overdose in the city on July 4th, 2012. Previously, Briggs had pleaded guilty to dealing heroin and causing the death, the overdose death. The drug transaction took place in Iowa, and the prosecution for the matter took place in the Eastern District of the Iowa Federal Court. Detective Matt Harkes of the Platteville PD investigated this incident on behalf of the Platteville Police Department. He received assistance from the Richland Iowa Grant Drug Task Force and the Dubuque Drug Task Force. He gathered information from interviews, cellphone records, and ultimately, the pathologist's report. Ultimately, he analyzed all of this information and compiled it into a professional set of documents which he presented to the federal prosecutor. Prosecution of the case resulted in a guilty plea without the necessity of a lengthy and costly trial. The Assistant U.S. Attorney, who handled the case, had very high praise for Detective Harkes on his investigation and case presentation, stating that it was the most thorough death investigation case he had seen related to an overdose case, and that Detective Harkes should be commended for his uncommon diligence in putting the case together. The case received a lot of media attention because it involved the death. I was very pleased to see this case conclude with a guilty plea and a lengthy prison sentence since it brought justice to the victim and his family and friends, and I believe it sends a strong message to drug dealers and others that law enforcement will do everything in its power to detect and investigate these illegal activities. So again, I was very pleased with the outcome of this. Unfortunately, heroin use and abuse has become way too prevalent, and Platteville is not immune from that. But again, if we can make a track record of looking into these things to the best of our ability, I think we'll continue to see positive outcomes like this, so.
Do you have any pictures of your officers that you could give to us so we can identify them and learn to know them?
Sure, we can make those available. We've got-
You used to hand out things in the past.
Kind of mug shots?
Get strong film.
Strong film, and no, we, right now, they're available in our annual report, probably everybody but Candace Cook, but all the other officers would be in there, and the annual report is available on the website, so.
I'd kind of like to go on record with Detective Harkes.
Yep.
And a thank you to him for a job well done.
No, and we don't want him to get a big hit, but he's been getting a lot of praise lately, so.
Please extend our congratulations to-
I will do so.
-from all the council.
Thank you.
We'll open this evening with a public hearing on Resolution 1341 to partially discontinue a portion of Hair Street. Before I begin, I will remind the public that if you would like to speak, either as citizens' comments, or if you would like to speak on a, something that's on our agenda, please fill out one of these forms and hand it to the city clerk. So we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, this is a resolution concerning discontinuance of a street. Hair Street is located between Lutheran and Broadway Street. It's a fairly small dead-end street off of Linden Street. Part of that street has been improved and is usable. There's another section of Hair Street that's platted, but it's never been improved or used as a public street. If you actually drive out there, you'd never know there's a street there since it exists on paper only, but there's adjoining property owners that have requested that part of that street be vacated. They would like to put that land to a better use, reconfigure some of their lots, and allow for the construction of a garage. Since that land serves no public purpose as a street, there's no public utilities present, it really is not needed as a street right away, so it seems to make sense that if somebody can make better use of that, put that land on the tax rolls, it would be better for the community as well. So the resolution, if approved, would do such. This has been reviewed by the Plan Commission. They, at their September 9th meeting, they did recommend approval. All the property owners that have frontage, property frontage on Hair Street have been notified of this. This also was published as a public hearing, so there's been adequate, proper notice regarding this request, but staff does concur with the Plan Commission recommendation and does recommend approval of the discontinuance of the street as described in the resolution. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Just one, does this alter his property taxes and all?
Well, I mean, by statute, when you discontinue a street, basically, you split it in half, and the land to, the northern half goes to the adjoining property to the north, and the southern half goes to the property owner to the south, so those parcels will become larger as far as what they own, so, you know, theoretically, you're taking their land and making it bigger, so there is some increase in value. You know, it wouldn't be significant until you make an improvement on that land, but it would increase their land area.
Is there an applicant statement? Anyone who would like to make a statement? If you would, you can come up to the microphone, please, and give your name and your address.
My name is Dan Ferdy. I live at 705 Lutheran Street, and basically, what I want to do is I have a signed offer to purchase two lots that are between myself and another lot that I own. I own Lot 4 already, as well as 705 Lutheran Street, and basically, what I want to do is combine that square footage with mine, so I have the ability to build a garage. One of the other neighbors wants to purchase some of the lot just to add some square footage to her lot also, so.
Any questions for the applicant?
So the access to the garage would be from Lutheran Street?
Correct.
And not from?
Correct. Those, there would be two lots, there are lots 5 and 6, that would, I don't think there'd be a problem getting them combined with my lot to make one large lot, and then I would sell some to another neighbor, so. And the street, the major portion of that street is only 25 feet wide, so it's just a, of the area to be closed, so that's basically a substandard street. The lots, the existing lots that were there were platted over 100 years ago, and nothing's been done in the first 100 years, so, you know, I don't think anything's going to happen in the next 100.
We're closing Hair Street then up to the Mathis probably line, which is 4?
Uh, no, it'll be up to Lot 3. 1 and 2 have already been combined into-
I'm sorry, I meant to Lot 3.
Correct, correct. And a portion of that is 50 feet wide, but then, as it gets down, it narrows down to 25 feet.
So the only land in question then is, or not in question, but talking about is the Mathis and Schmichael, them three lots?
Actually, I believe the lot that is Mathis considered, that's Lot Number 4, Dick?
Yeah.
Okay, I own that lot now.
Oh, okay.
So I already own Lot Number 4, and so it'd be lots 5 and 6 that I'm purchasing-
Okay.
-from the people who bought the former Schmichael house.
Okay.
They're tired of mowing it.
Well, I, I make a motion.
We have to finish the public hearing and then-
Okay, it's public hearing, I'm sorry.
Any more questions?
Okay, thank you. So any public statements in favor? Public statements against? Public statements in general? Any further council discussion? Otherwise, we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, motion on the request.
Okay, now, I move we accept the staff's recommendation.
To approve Resolution 1341, or, yeah, 1341?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. We'll vote.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is consideration, the consent calendar, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. The first is the minutes of the September 17th, 2013 special council meeting, and also the September 24th, 2013 regular council meeting. Payment of the bills, that's in your packet, financial report is in your packet, appointments to boards and commissions I have done this evening, and licenses, Class B beer and liquor for Down at the Boondock LLC Lancaster, Angel C. Henry Agent for premises at 70 North Second Street, and that is contingent upon surrender of license from Boondock Saloon Also, one or two-year operators for premises, license to traffic in fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors that listed in your packet. There is a walk permit for family advocates for domestic violence awareness on October 16th, and Resolution 1342, which designates October 2013 as United Nations Month. Is there a motion?
I saw move, the consent calendar, be accepted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, we have three this evening. The first is Ed White.
Good evening, Ed White, and I'm here representing the Platteville Area Advisory, excuse me, the Platteville Economic Development Advisory Group, which is an informal group of your economic development folks in Platteville, including the Chamber, Main Street, the Platteville Incubator, and others, excuse me, and I handed out a little earlier a letter inviting you all to participate in the Economic Development 101 for Local Officials, which is a program that's been developed by the Wisconsin Economic Development Association in concert with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, and we thought, we've talked for some time about basically telling our story or telling the story of economic development, how do public officials fit into that, including staff and others, so this happened to come out, they've done a couple of trials, sessions, they worked out well, so we've signed on. It's October 29th, from noon to 3:00 at the Mount City Motor Branch, details are in there, but it's basically meant to give local officials kind of an idea of how economic development works, the basics, why you do it, what you should get out of it, and, you know, going from there, so that's all listed in there. I'm just here to kind of see if there are any questions at this point. We've invited, or will invite, I just sent about a half and a half hour ago the invitation to save the date, to the Platteville Common Council, the Platteville School Board, our four county supervisors, I believe that was, that was it. So, it's Platteville-centered, and we're going to go from there.
And on that email, is there information about how to register? I assume you want us to register, so you know if we're coming?
Actually, there's not, it was just to save the date, we'll send a, when we get, how, who's going to take registration? Larry's pointing at me. So we'll get another email out following. This did not go out to the, to the rest of the group, so this will go out and we'll add a section on who to call for registration. Yes, Ken?
Oh, just a minor point, it starts at noon.
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be a meal with this or something?
Yes, it's on the save the date. The meal is going to be provided by your partners, the Platteville Business Incubator, the Chamber, the Main Street Program, so.
I won't eat at home, then.
Don't eat at home. A light lunch, Ken, you know, not steak and eggs or anything like that, subs and chips.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Darrell Browning.
Hi, my name's Darrell Browning, 785 South Chestnut's my address. I'm here to congratulate our city manager. I think he will succeed in putting me to jail. Let me tell you what it's like in walking my shoes. Forty years ago, my daughter was born. When she, when she was born, she had a lazy eye. I saved up the money for a one-day surgery, and a head nurse refused to call a doctor during the evening hours. One day turned into 10 days, plus I had to pay to have the surgery done. Thirty years ago, when my son was born, my wife developed toxemia. I had one of the top doctors in the world tell me that he didn't know if he could save my wife. He was one pound, eight ounces when he was born. Three days become 10 weeks in a $55,000 doctor bill. I and my wife had to drop our hospital insurance, and I sat one night and watched my wife suffer so that we could avoid emergency room charges. The next morning, I had to carry her to the car to avoid ambulance charges. She had to be hospitalized. Next, when I went on social security, we switched the income from the business to my wife. The State of Wisconsin declared her an employee and fined, and fined me $750 for not paying workman's comp insurance, even though she couldn't collect on it. Next thing I turned around, when I turned 65, you were entitled to a free physical that I took. Guess what? Due to a paper mix-up, Medicare didn't pay the doctor who came after me. Next thing, the city, the city called my, I call home, declared, declared I'm a disgrace to Platteville, and fined me $700 that I beat in court. Being as you have come back on me, I know that no matter how much I spend, what I do, I'll never be done. I and my family have spent thousands and hundreds of hours. I am tired, I cannot sleep at night wondering why life's work will be taken from me because I am poor. I try to live on $25 a week. This includes gas. My youngest daughter has become ill and has racked up thousands of dollars in doctor bills I have to pay. She has not been able to complete college or work for more than four hours without laying down. Plus, I had my identity stolen. Because I know the person who did it, I am not pressing charge, charges. Also, to climb the stairs to come up here gives me chest pains. I am afraid to go to the doctor. I am in fear Medicare won't pay again. Also, when this started out, I was told to have the last tooth on the right side of my mouth removed. When the city issued me $790 in fines, I held off. In order to relieve the pain someday, I take dental floss and cut my gum to relieve the pressure. I'll be happy to give you the oral surgeon's referral. This is the evil person you are out to destroy. My family has paid for this fight, and it's time I stop taking money out of my niece and nephew's college fund. Issue my citations and I go to jail. When I'm in jail, U-Haul will drop me, and I will not be able to pay my taxes, and my home and business are gone. The minute you put the second lien on my property, the bank will call my note. I have too much credit cards and owe too many doctor bills to be able to refinance. Not only will the university get my property for nothing, but will you make my wife homeless, and I'll be on the street corner with a sign that reads, "I'll work for food." You've already taken what had meant the most to me. Due to the fines from the city and the state, I and my wife have separated. I can only imagine how proud you are of Rick and Larry's work. I think that a motion is in order that taxpayers buy the city council and manager a steak dinner. You have proven you do not care what taxpayers want or say. You have proven this with a five-to-one vote to keep our city manager. Go ahead, vote yourself the steak dinner. If anybody would dare challenge the city's power, you can blame it on the Brownings, or just send Rick to terrorize him, that'll shut him up. The things that I have stated are true, and I'm more than willing to sign anything I need to, so you can check for yourself. I beg you, please, don't take my life's work from me. Thank you.
And Michael Mayo?
Michael Mayo, 375 South Chestnut. I didn't know what Darrell was going to say today. I had no idea, although I assist him at his business whenever I can. But my comments are very akin to what he said. We have a business manager who is giving the University of Wisconsin everything it asks for and wants, and giving our citizens nothing. His job is to maintain this city. The university built itself here as a result of the mining school that went into existence long before one shovel was built over, over, down South Chestnut. And now, Mr. Burkey has said it in open discussions with the media, anyone you know, he is going to give the university every possible break it can. To what end? So that the university can then totally control the city? Or I'm forgetting, Barbara Dos isn't here. Your contract was written by Barbara, and she gave you full authority over everything in this city, correct?
Mr. Mayo, would you address the council's issue?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Everything is to address the council, but the council doesn't want to address the issue. Fundamentally, the, the council has been derelict of its duty by not protecting this city, by allowing every outsiders to take control and to do what they want with it. And to what end? We have, we lost two members of the university in the last election, and I'm very proud of that. We have to start voting real people in, and you, all seven of you, although one's not missed, one's not here today, have to recognize the fact that you were put in office to take care of this city and the people who live here, not to allow somebody else, an outsider, to come in and do what he wants, and then let the university be his puppeteer and tell him what to do. There is not one of you, in the time I have been on, coming to these meetings, that have been able to stand up and do your duty to the people of this city, and I for one am Mike has tried, I've spoken to him many times. Barbara, I attempted to help, to help you understand that the city needed things. It didn't happen. Dick, you're an outspoken proponent of Deleke. You were here to keep him quiet, if I'm not mistaken. Those were your words. Ken, we know where your allegiance is. Eileen, I don't know where yours is. Patrice? I think it's a combination. Who's going to fight for the city? Who wants to be elected to the city council to fight for the city and for the residents? Not to give him a raise, not to have him manipulate the budget so that we need 5.5% more? As much as I did not like Mr. Deleke, he kept the budget for two solid years that I can remember, and not one of you have. Not one of you have attempted to. You are still trying to give the university whatever, whenever, and how it wants. And if we're not mistaken, he said it at this podium, "We want to be a good neighbor." Well, he's not. If he was my neighbor, I'd do everything in the world to put up a massive fence around my, my property, because he's not a good neighbor. If he was, and he was giving something back to the city, which is what a university is supposed to do, look at the program that he wants, the Innovation Center, that came out as a $21 million program, and now, all of a sudden, it's only eight, but that's just the beginning, because he's going to come back to the city council and ask for more and more and more. And if we maintain a city council like this, he's going to get it, and especially with the city manager like him.
Mr. Mayo, your five minutes is up, thank you.
Why, I thank you very much, and I hope, and I pray, that you take heed into what I say. I'm not doing this for myself, I am not doing this because I'm upset at anyone, no, I'm upset because this is my town and I live here.
Thank you.
Not an outsider.
Thank you. I don't have any other citizens' comments, observations, petitions. I know that Patrice has an announcement she would like to make.
Yeah, actually, I have two announcements I would like to make. They are related. First off, this Saturday night, here in the auditorium downstairs, the Friends of the Municipal Auditorium and the Platteville Community Theater are sponsoring a play, a production, Robert Lynn's play, called "The Stupid Economy," starring award-winning actress Chrissy Hoag. Chrissy Hoag is a native of Queens, now living in Dubuque, and you might recognize her face once you see her. She has done commercials loudly for the Dubuque Airport, the Fly Dubuque campaign. The production is just one night, Saturday night, at 8 o'clock, and the admission is $10, or if you care to attend a wine and appetizer reception beginning at 7:00 here in Council Chambers, those tickets are $25. And tickets are available at the door, they are available at the Driftless Market, and if you would like to buy the combination ticket of the show and the wine and orders reception, that you can only purchase online at brownpickfordtickets.com. And this, this performance, by the way, was performed last weekend in New York City on Broadway, two sold-out performances, so we are hoping that Platteville will have a- to sold-out performances, so we are hoping that Plattville will have a sold-out performance. And she has also performed this summer in San Diego and two areas in Chicago. So, we are thrilled to have Chrissy agree to do this here in Plattville. We're, we're really, really lucky to get such a professional production here in town. And on the, my second note, my second announcement is related because the Friends of Municipal Auditorium, we have received several grants in the past several months that is supporting the production costs for this play, "The Stupid Economy". And I'd like to, I guess publicly thank, first off, the Plattville Community Fund. They have awarded us three hundred and seventy-five dollars to pay for production costs. And also Grant County Tourism. They have awarded us twelve hundred and fifty dollars to support the production. And in addition to that, the president of the Friends of the Municipal Auditorium, Cheryl Schmider, she applied for a grant to Prudential Insurance Company. It's called a Skills and Service Grant. And it's a nationwide grant program, and competition is very stiff. And I'm happy to announce that Plattville has received a five thousand dollar grant. And, oh, also, Prudential earlier in the year did award a two hundred and fifty dollar grant to us for volunteers that spend at least forty hours working for a particular organization, which all of us, all of us have. So, again, hope to see you Saturday night in the auditorium.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the council?
Not that good.
Very nice grants.
Thank you.
Next item, reports. Committee reports in your packet include the Commission on Aging. Anything to add, Bonin?
Nope, everything is as in the report.
Museum Board, Stockhausen?
Well, you established a work group, so that should be the next.
That will be starting in October. Tourism Committee, Steiner?
Nothing.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No additions.
Redevelopment Authority is Doss, and she is not here this evening. Library Board, Minister in the Packet, and I have nothing to add. Other reports in the packet are the twenty thirteen Quarterly Staffing Report, the Airport Financial Report for September, Waters who are Revenue and Expense Report for September, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those?
Other question?
All right.
Progress Report for the Police and Fire Commission. What is the nature of the complaint which will be heard tomorrow night?
We had a citizen complaint filed from an incident dating back in November two thousand and three. And to elaborate on the nature of the complaint, I don't really feel I can because the scope of it kind of escapes me as well.
It's an open hearing?
It's an open hearing. Portions of the meeting are reserved for closed-session deliberations, but the hearing on the complaint itself is an open hearing.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll go on to action items. And the first item is Ordinance thirteen nineteen, amending the official traffic map. Joder Howard, other Larrys, I'm not sure who wants to approach this one.
That's fine. I'll, I'll go ahead and get started. We had a petition from Dr. Smith to change the official traffic map. The original ordinance twelve dash zero two prohibited parking and authorized the installation of no parking signs on Calhoun Drive and other streets in the Golden Heights area as part of parking restrictions as was discussed with residents surrounding the new Roundtree Commons Building. Dr. Smith and others are petitioning to remove that restriction. Based on input from the community and the council, there are three options to consider. Option one is to repeal that one section, which would just repeal the no parking for Calhoun Drive only. And then that would end up reverting to a forty-eight hour restriction on parking. Or option number two would be to repeal that section of the ordinance and replace it with no parking three AM to six AM, basically so that we could enforce no overnight parking along that street. Based on the further discussions we had, we put in option three, which would repeal the sub-paragraphs of Ordinance twelve oh two relating to Kamla Court, Ready Drive, Minoge Drive, Calhoun Drive, and Ammar Drive. Ammar Drive is not currently developed at this point. What it would do is it would replace all of this with no parking three to six AM, i.e. no overnight parking for all of these above streets. So, there were people who thought that we should look at a, a more holistic approach rather than, than a piecemeal block by block. And that's what we have as option three. So, we have a number of different folks who have commented on this. Many of them have said that they would prefer option three. A few, one or two have said permit parking. You've heard from, from some of the people in, in the neighborhood regarding, regarding their desires. And I believe there are a few people here tonight to talk about that.
Counsel, discussion.
I, I favor option three. I think it's the best approach. It covers areas that, at least one area I know where people have asked me or talked to me about changing the parking so that friends, guests could come to their place and park on the street. And if, if it becomes too much a problem as far as excessive parking during the day, we can always go in the future to permit parking.
I agree with Ken, that I think we need to go with option three. And as he said, if it becomes a problem, we can always go to the permit parking.
Other comments or questions?
Doug, I have one for you. One of the people mentioned that at one point in time, when they first put no parking in that area, then there was also supposedly, they're supposed to be allowed to be able to come to you if they had a party or a bunch of guests over and request a permit so they would be able to park for that particular incident. Now, you made mention that if there was a certain parking sign there or a certain type of no parking, that they would be able to do that. But if it's totally no parking on any of it, then they wouldn't be able to do that. Is that correct?
If there's a prohibition on parking twenty-four seven, it's difficult to, if not impossible, to grant excuse parking on a limited-term basis because people have the expectation that there will never be any vehicles there. When you're simply exceeding time limits, then it's much easier and you're not assuming as much liability to allow excuse parking on a as-needed basis.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I go along with Ken's comments. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt option three. Is there an ordinance on this or a resolution? Ordinance?
Yeah, Ordinance thirteen nineteen.
Well, I second Ken's motion on option three, pardon me. And, sorry, did you want to say something?
Thirteen nineteen, is that, no, that's option one, option.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're all the same number.
They're all thirteen nineteen.
Oh, okay, thirteen nineteen, option three.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll vote. Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution thirteen forty-three, amending the City of Plattville's Employee Handbook relative to residency requirements. Who wants to talk about this first?
I'd be happy to. The city council has reviewed this issue several times. It's a result of Act twenty passed by the State of Wisconsin, which changed the regulations regarding municipal residence requirements. So, the City of Plattville has the City Employee Handbook, and that handbook does have residency requirements in it. At this time, an amendment to our handbook is required in order to comply with state law, which suggests that residency will only be permitted within certain situations, those being full-time police, full-time firefighter, and full-time EMTs. And they must live within fifteen miles of the City of Plattville. The resolution before you has not changed. It's still up for discussion. And included in your packet is also a copy of the state law, a copy of the Employee Handbook referencing this section, as well as the city attorney's legal opinion regarding residency. Does anyone have any questions?
Larry? Basically, this resolution is just for amending the handbook at this time. But if you remember, with that new Wisconsin law, there is also the exception. Okay? I discussed that with our city attorney and asked him because it does state in there that there are certain residency requirements that you can have even after this law is in effect because it's even stated in Part D of the law. And I asked him if it can, you can not have residency requirements, but then in another part of the law, it says you can. He said, "Well, that's the exception." So, there will still be exceptions, even though the handbook is changed. Just so we're all aware of that.
Other questions?
Okay, as I read the Resolution D one, the list in there of people that was made up by local?
I was requested by the city council to look through the emergency operations plan, and those are the positions mentioned in the emergency operation plan under one of the appendices.
Well, these people must live within fifteen miles. So, the police chief, within fifteen miles, how many miles away are you?
Thirteen.
One?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And then city manager, within fifteen miles, and city attorney, fifteen miles.
Yes, I believe the city attorney's legal opinion references that portions of Paragraph D may need to be amended to comply with state law. But Paragraphes A, B, and C are included in state law in that it's full-time firefighters, full-time EMS, and full-time police officers.
So, D needs to be amended, changed?
Or removed.
Well, then.
That hasn't been done.
No, the city council, we've discussed this at previous meetings, and my understanding was that the council was not in agreement that that should occur.
Exactly. I think you're talking about the paragraph in the state law.
No, I'm referencing the, the resolution.
Oh, okay.
The resolution that changes the handbook, Paragraph D. Is that what you're looking at, Mr. Killian?
Yes, this is, this is proposed, right?
Yep.
And you're telling me that this, this is to be revised?
Well, it ultimately is your decision, and, and we await your decision as to what you would like done with the resolution. I'm advising, and the city attorney is advising, that Paragraph D does not fully comply with state law. Oh, excuse me, it's Paragraph D one, Paragraph D. So, it's the sub-paragraph that I'm referring to. Paragraph D is residency, then it goes to number one employees.
You're talking about D one D.
That's correct.
Ken, you may remember that when we did the Employee Handbook, we talked about emergency personnel and had asked the city manager to list individuals that if there were a certain type of emergency, we would want them present in the city should that emergency occur. That's how this list came about. The Act twenty says that you have to be an emergency person. And then you can require that person to live within fifteen miles of the city limits. That was a state law. It was put into the state budget. So, what we're looking at here is whether or not we need to amend our employee handbook and say that these individuals, unless you feel that they're really emergency personnel, as the law defines it, these individuals probably have to be removed from our handbook.
By the state law, the way our attorney explained it to me is that we can't have a handbook item that says that we have a residency clause, exception. There are exceptions to that particular thing, and it's even specified in the law. That emergency personnel, fire protection, and police protection, okay? If they're volunteers, no, they aren't required to do this. If they are paid, they are required to live within fifteen miles.
Right.
Now, the reason I think the city manager issue came up is because in our emergency action plan, you've designated yourself as the number-one go-to emergency coordinator, correct?
As part of the position I'm assigned, emergency operations director.
Therefore, that includes you in the fifteen-mile radius.
Well, that's up to your interpretation, whatever the city council decides.
I was looking at the exception right here of code. I have the law on my hand, state court law, right here. And I asked Brian about it. I said, "In one paragraph, they say no, except for emergency people." The other paragraph says you can't do it. I said, "Now, another paragraph says that you can." There's also a paragraph in here that says if you have a contract in place by July second, two thousand and thirteen, that residency clause stays in effect until that contract is either renewed,
expires.
canceled, or changed. So, and those are, and I asked him, "Well, how can it be so ambiguous?" And he said, "Those are what are called exceptions." So, we can do what we want to to the handbook, but there are still exceptions that we can enforce.
What's the date on them laws that you're talking about there in the state?
This is the one that was just passed by the governor, okay? Sixty-six oh four one eighteen. That's the wrong one, sorry.
Oh, it's oh five.
Sixty-six oh five oh two, okay? This just happened.
July second.
And Mr. Den, the ones you're referring to are Paragraphes D one, A, B, C, and then the city manager position under Paragraph D. Is, is my interpretation then that your recommendation is to drop the remainder of Paragraph D?
Mike, my whole point is, I understand we have to put it in our handbook that we don't have a residency law for, like, if you're hiring anybody.
Yep.
But we still have it for specific.
Yes.
Just like the state law says.
Yep.
That's my recommendation.
And so the question is looking at the Resolution, amending the City Employee Handbook, and we're looking at D residency one D, and it lists one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven people. Question is whether or not we amend our handbook to reflect the fact that should all those people be included or not? According to the state law, the police department, or the police chief, the EMS administrator, and fire chief, as I understand it, could be required to live within fifteen miles of the city limits. Question is, do we want to add the city manager to that list? Or do we drop all the others on here? That's the question.
Well, how would, it doesn't make any sense to have these key people half hour away.
Well, you know, Mike, I agree with you, but unfortunately, the governor passed. Well, the, the governor inserted this in the budget of the State of Wisconsin, and the budget passed. So.
Correct, but there is an exception in the law.
There's an exception, and as our attorney said, depending on which opinion you read.
True.
Because there seems to be, the way the law was, was passed, it's, it can be interpreted more than one way. It hasn't been challenged, and the City of Milwaukee is challenging it. I think you know that. So, but in interest of moving this along, we, we've discussed this before. So, I think the question is, do we want to amend our employee handbook to reflect the state law? If we do, then we need to be specific on how we want to amend it. So, we understand the residency requirement can be in effect for the chief of police, for, or for police officers, I guess, and for.
Emergency personnel.
The EMS administrator, I believe. But any, if, if they're a paid individual, if they're volunteers, we cannot require it. And so the. And so the fire chief would also be...
They also make mention of the emergency personnel...
They did.
When we're talking about... And that's the position Larry has said that he has. So that includes him. By that reason, that reason only.
I understand that. So, looking for a motion. We've discussed this. And so looking for a motion to either approve the changes or leave it alone, whatever we want to do.
Well, we've talked about the fact that this state law is being challenged. And we don't have the outcome of that challenge yet. So I'm questioning why we're working on this thing right now. Let's wait until the challenge is done.
I agree.
Oh, I disagree.
I disagree.
I need to clarify...
They already challenged the governor with the recall, and it didn't work.
Oh, this is a different issue.
With Act 10, this is Act 20.
If there's a stay on a law... If there would be...
No.
Sorry, no, sorry. If you... We are... This is a council discussion. We do have one person who's registered to speak. And so when the council... I'd like... Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. When you reference the city of Milwaukee, I need to clarify that the state has passed the law, which means any challenges doesn't change the fact that the law has been passed. So if a situation occurs, I'm just fearful that there could be an exercise of some liability if we continue to require residency and the challenge is not... Does not overturn the law. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So I prefer to...
Before you make a motion, we do have one person who'd like to speak. Okay. We do have one person who'd like to speak on the subject, Mr. Mayo.
Michael Mayo, 375 Southchester. When you talk about emergency operations plans, I've got a little bit of knowledge in this. I'm a former deputy coordinator in the city of Carteret, New Jersey, which has about as many people, if not more than, the city of Platteville. As a deputy coordinator, my responsibility was to write and review these plans. There are very many aspects of it. And just to take it into consideration, Mr. Burkey, I'm sorry. I called him mister. He doesn't deserve that title. He hasn't earned it yet.
Mr. Mayo.
Excuse me, Mr. Bonin?
Just, okay, make your comments.
Do you have something to say?
Make your comments, please. No.
You're immaterial.
Just watch it.
Excuse me? Are you threatening me?
Okay, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Bonin. Would you please continue? But we would like to move this along, so...
Yes, I would too.
Make your point.
My point is, is that when a man identifies himself as the emergency management coordinator in the city of Platteville, it is his responsibility to take care of it, not as has been in the past. He had twelve direct reports. Now, he's only got six now. He was classified himself as the emergency management coordinator. Now, he got rid of that too. But yet, we're still paying him full salary for all the positions he's diminished.
Okay, we're talking about this resolution.
We're talking about this program. He considers himself the emergency management personnel in this town. Therefore, he is the key person when, if we have another fire like we had over by...
Chicago's Best.
Chicago's Best, thank you. Or any other situations, like the wrecks that we've had out on 151. It's his responsibility to direct the town, not the departments. He is supposed to be the one to set up a command center so that these departments can come to him for help. He doesn't want that responsibility. He can't do that responsibility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
And you are paying him his full salary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
I relinquished my last couple of minutes to the gentleman in the back who wanted to talk.
No, the gentleman in the back.
Because point of order was called, and he... You know, I told you this before. Point of order says he has the right to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
You went off right. I have a couple of minutes left, and I relinquish my time to the gentleman in the back.
We allow five minutes.
I have five minutes.
We allow five minutes at the beginning for citizens' comments.
I have...
Not for the rest of it.
I understand it was only about three minutes that I took. I relinquish my time to the gentleman in the back.
Mr. Mayo, thank you.
That's under Roberts Rules of Orders, which this organization should be conducting its meetings.
Thank you. All right.
Obviously, you don't care about rules, only what...
Any other comments from the city council? We need to...
I would suggest removing Item D1D and just have A, B, C in the employees.
Reread that then.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So repeat your motion, please, so that everyone on the council hears it.
Explain it, please.
Okay, under Article 5, Recruitment, Appointment, and Employment, Item D, which is residency. And then item... Under that item, it lists the employees who must live within fifteen miles of the city limits. A, all full-time police officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and police chief. B, all full-time firefighters, fire captains, deputy chiefs, and fire chief. And C, all full-time emergency medical service responders, period. So therefore, I'm removing D.
You want to remove all those people from the residency?
I do, yeah, yes. That's my motion.
That's your motion? And we have a second from Dick. So we have a motion and a second, and we're going to vote.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
No.
Stackhausen?
No.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion ties?
What does that mean?
Dies.
It denied.
Dies.
It tied, and therefore, it does not pass. Maybe bringing this one back up again when we see what happens at the state level.
I'd like to make a motion that we leave those specific positions in the handbook. The rest of the residency issues, we will not have, okay? I'm not making myself clear. Okay, let me start over, all right? With the residency issue, anybody that works within the city of Platteville supposedly should live here, okay? That's a generic form, right?
No, that is not correct. That's not correct.
All right, I want to make... Then let's do this. I'll make the motion that we accept the residency portion of our handbook listed to the chief of police, the EMS, the fire chief, and our emergency response coordinator. And if that's Mr. Burkey, then that's who it is.
So that position? You're saying that position?
That position, yes. Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
Can you repeat again, Mike?
Sure. I would like us... I make a resolution that we accept the residency guidelines for the chief of police, for the fire chief, for emergency response people, and for our emergency coordinator. And at this point, it's Mr. Burkey, whoever else will be in that position. And they should live within fifteen miles of the city of Platteville.
So looking at the resolution, you are in agreement with A, B, C, and D just includes the emergency person?
Yes.
That's what you're moving?
Yes.
Well, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Steiner?
No.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
No.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, we're going on to ordinance. 1320, amending the official traffic map for Second Street evening closure.
Yeah, I'll start off, and I guess Doug can chime in on a lot of this stuff. Common council had discussed recommendations to make Second Street safer and reduce the impacts of overconsumption of alcohol. One of the recommendations that was supported by the council was to close off Second Street on weekend evenings. What we've done here is we've looked at this, and we had attempted to work with the owners regarding physical closure of Second Street on weekends. They were concerned, they had some concerns. And we came back with a compromised position that we would block it off or using signage, basically say that there's no through-traffic on that block of Second Street between Main and Mineral Street from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM every day. And similar restriction on parking in that block. No parking, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So the police department would end up reserving the right to physically block off the street during special events. And if they did so, they would have somebody stationed there to let residents or others who have business on that street to come in to that street. The last time we talked, we wanted to make sure that all business owners and residents got a copy of a letter explaining what's being proposed. You should have a copy in your packet of a letter that went out and the list of the owners and residents that received these. And I've worked with the Main Street program to make sure that we got that information to businesses as well. The idea here is to try to make that block safer for everybody. And if the chief has something that he wants to add?
I have very little to add. It's one of the alcohol impact priorities that the council identified previously this year. It's being done in the name of reducing the potential conflict between pedestrians and the motoring public.
Any questions for Howard or the chief?
No.
All right, we have two people who have asked to speak about this item. First is Jack Lutke.
My name is Jack Lutke. I'm the executive director for the Main Street program. And I really just wanted to speak more to the process than the end result. This was a situation which was, at first, as proposed, unacceptable to several of the business and building owners on Second Street because they needed access for not only their businesses, but for the tenants on that block. And through the efforts of the police chief and also of Howard coming to a meeting with some of those business owners, this amended proposal was achieved. Not that it's the end-all to solving the issue, but I think it's a step in the right direction. And I wanted to commend their efforts to reach a decision through discussion with these business people that would be acceptable to the safety issue on Second Street and also the issue that they had to have access to their buildings and businesses that they need to get in there on a regular basis. The first proposal was just totally unacceptable to them and to the tenants. So that's the only thing I wanted to say about it. Thank you. Do you have a question, Ken?
I have a question for whomever. It says here in the ordinance, no through-traffic, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then on the front page, it says, in the first paragraph, the last sentence, this means residents of the block and traffic meant to support business on that street are allowed on the street. So is, when it says no left-right turn from 10:00 to 6:00 AM, is that absolute now? Or is that going to allow some...
I'll step, by the way, because I think that's a question for the chief.
You might have the answer. I don't know.
I think it's a question for the chief.
What I would liken it to is construction zones where local traffic only, people pulling in to gain access to the parking lot mid-block or early in the block, or people that might be helping load up equipment for maybe if there was a band at one of the bars or something. They're doing... Performing a service in which they need access to mid-block. They'll stop there and then continue on the normal traffic pattern.
So there could be people turning on that street?
Hopefully, in a very limited manner.
Between 10:00 and 6:00? Okay.
There is a tenant that parks the car...
Correct.
Behind the building he's in. The building's on Main Street, but right behind it. That is a legal driveway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we have one other person who would like to speak to this issue, Regina Polly.
Regina Polly, 235 North Elm Street. I got the letter. I'm the proud owner of Gina's Restaurant and Bar. And one of the things when we brought the building and what we put on our billboard was we were going to be delivering. And so I had envisioned us driving up to the front of the building and bringing the pizza or whatever delivery food out. Now, we haven't started the food yet. But I'm a little upset. There is a back door, but it has stairs. So when you're carrying stuff, I guess I always envisioned that we'd go out the front door. And when I've only been down at the bar one weekend, and it was homecoming weekend, I can see where there might be exceptions. But it looked like 90% of the people were walking to the bars. They weren't driving, from what I could see. Because we had big windows, and I was seeing hordes and hordes of people all walking. So I don't know how many people drive down to Second Street. I think they leave the dorms a little after 10:00. And they get down there about 10:30 or so. And I'm not sure... I'm not saying that, you know, you don't want to be safe. But I also noticed, both on Friday and Saturday night, that ambulances needed to pull up because people had overd drunk. And so it seemed like you do want some cars going through at times.
But you'll have business or sell business vehicles?
Well, we will have, yeah, something with a Gina sign on the side, like a magnet or something. And we were hoping to take the food out that front door. But this will be a huge problem.
Will you have a delivery vehicle?
Yeah, well, we have delivery on our billboard. We were planning to do delivery.
Well, you'll have a vehicle or two or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. We'll need to deliver with a vehicle.
Okay.
So this sort of throws a kibosh into our delivery plan.
I kind of think that would fall under one of the authorized vehicles in that you're acting in furtherance of your business.
Even if we're pulling up every half hour or whatever?
I would tend to believe that... My interpretation of the rule would be that that would be an authorized vehicle.
You're not going to park there permanently, are you?
No, we just have our flaggers on.
And then...
No, we wouldn't need to park there.
And then along with what you said, authorized vehicles would include emergency vehicles. So that the ambulance that you referenced would definitely be included.
I think... Does that answer your question?
Yeah, if we can pull up to take pizzas out or whatever.
Right.
We would want your drivers to exercise caution because people have the expectation that there will be limited traffic out there.
Well, hopefully, we won't pull drivers.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
President, what does... What did Chicago's Best do?
I'm sorry.
They do what their deliveries.
Yeah, they... Yeah, that's true. They had deliveries as well, so...
Where did they park?
On that side street.
I think they had space behind the building because I think the kitchen was actually on that end. I don't know what they'll do when they redo that building. That could change, Barb, but...
Okay, just checking.
Okay, so any other questions on the closure, the Second Street evening closure? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 13-20, amending the...
I move to approve ordinance 13-20, amending the official traffic map, Second Street evening closure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes. Motion carries. Item D, ordinance 1321, amending section 3119, license fee and term waiver of taxi license fee. Order. Jan or Larry?
I'd be happy to take this. We met, and we discussed this at our last meeting under information and discussion. Basically, the city of Platteville requires that all taxis be licensed, both the vehicle and the driver. Grant County Road Crew has asked that we amend our ordinances, as they are a nonprofit, and they feel as though their donations, or the money that they do have, is better spent on fuel, taking people home who need the ride, perhaps than filing for fees and licenses. And staff is recommending that we waive the license fees for nonprofits. And that's the decision before you.
So the Road Crew so far is the only one that has requested this waiver, then Larry?
Yes.
Do we know of any other possible nonprofit?
I do not. Do you, do you, no, staff does not know of any others.
We got some information the other day about usage as far as a vehicle in the evening. Was that for Grand County or is that for local?
No, no, that was the extended taxi hours for the city's taxi.
And the taxi, okay.
Remember, we had talked about extending the hours, and then you wanted to know how many rides were being used during those periods?
I got it.
Okay.
This one, we don't have any data.
Nope, nope.
Who, who, Grand County Road Crew, who sponsors that, or what? Any idea?
I don't know.
It is a 501(c)(3) unto itself, I believe. They were formerly grant-funded, and now it's kind of been taken over the fundraising and whatnot by the entity itself.
Do they have an office, an official office anywhere, Doug?
I think out of Keeler, they have, at least that's where the phone rings into.
Do they come to Platteville on bar nights and wait for people?
And I would term them an asset in that countywide, and I can't beyond anecdotally say it, but I'd like to think there's a reduction in drunk driving and in definitely in accidents countywide. I think people make good use of the resource.
Well, I would move to approve ordinance 13-21, amending section 31.19, license fee and term waiver of taxi license fee for nonprofit organizations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the proposed ordinance on beekeeping.
Yeah, this would be a proposed amendment to Chapter 6 and Chapter 22. Basically, it would, if approved, it would allow the keeping of bees within the city of Platteville. Currently, we have an ordinance in Chapter 6 that allows poultry houses and keeping of other animals, and it's basically outlines the standards that need to be followed for that to happen. We do not have such provision regarding bees, so as it currently stands, they're not permitted. So this would allow that to take place. There would be a permit that would be needed to do that, and that the ordinance would outline, basically provide standards, guidelines, on how they would need to follow in order to keep the bees. So this would make it allowable use within the city. The Plant Commission has recommended approval, so it'll be on for consideration at your next meeting. Any questions?
Yes, on page 2. Under C, notification. It says that the property owners will be notified. Will you notify building tenants? Or is that the responsibility of the property owner, or will they not be notified at all?
We would notify the property owner of record. And if it's a multi-tenant building, they would be responsible for notifying their tenants.
Because down on our D1, it says that written permission of the property owner, building owner, building tenant should be required to locate hives closer than these distances.
Yeah, and we would have to work off of the information we have available, which is going to be the property owner of record. If it's a, you know, a situation where it's a house that's rented, and we find out through the approval process, then we would involve the tenant. Are you suggesting that should, that should be "and" tenant instead of "or"?
Well, the question is, if you had a large complex, it'd be difficult to know who all the tenants are.
Correct.
So we're leaving it up to the property owner to do the notification.
And they could also give permission, not having notified the tenants.
Other questions? Otherwise, we have two people who have asked to speak on this. One is Jason Cloving.
My name is Jason Cloving. I live at 127 Pine Grove in Platteville, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak in favor of the beekeeping ordinance. I was one of the people that originally approached Joe about trying to get this passed. I didn't realize it was illegal to do so inside the city limits. And I was already set to do this, and then I was notified that this wasn't allowed. So Joe was nice enough to work with me, and he's done an excellent job of drafting this ordinance. It's, he's used some model ordinances from Madison. The CEO of Eau Claire is considering a similar ordinance, I'm aware of. And keeping these in a controlled environment in a responsible fashion is very beneficial to the city for both pollination and for the production of honey. The risk to average individuals, there are about 51 people per year that are killed from bee sting or other stinging animal injury in the United States. To give you an idea, there's about 50 people killed per year by lightning strike. So the overall risk of this occurring is marginally low. There's very low risk to these items doing anything bad. Of the people that do die from stinging animal injury, about 10% of them are under the age of 20. So it's not little kids that get injured, it's mostly adults and older individuals. If you have a stinging allergy, if you have an anaphylactic reaction, a true allergy to bee sting or other venom, you can get injected with 100 mcg of mixed vespid venom subcutaneously, I think it's about every six months, by an allergist. It's 98% effective at preventing a future anaphylactic reaction. So there is a very effective treatment if you have a known allergy to this as well. So it's not like this is a high-risk item that people have to be worried about. The Paris Opera House keeps them on the roof. There are several downtown hotels in Boston that keep them. The president has one on his property about 30 to 40 yards away from his basketball court. And if you think about all the dignitaries and all the officials and all the other people that stroll through there on a weekly, daily basis, he's not putting any of them at risk. So in general, these things, if done in a responsible manner, are very safe to do. And I just would like to add that I do live within 15 miles of the city limits, just so you know.
Thank you. Darrell Browning would like to speak on beekeeping.
Hi, Darrell Browning, 785 South Chestnut. I think the gentleman that just spoke in front of me covered most things that I wanted to say. But I'd like to add that bee spit is one of the very few things that is spit out of animals or insects' mouths that I want to eat. The other thing is, is I become interested in following the plight of the bees about five years ago from a beekeeper who was my customer. The bees out in the country are dying by the millions. And without bees to pollinate nuts, fruits, and stuff, our grocery stores are going to be very empty. So if Madison can do it, I hope Platteville can.
All right. Next item, staff recommendation to repeal ordinance 3115 regarding vending on city property.
City staff received a clarification of the administrative codes and state statutes as they pertain to food vending. As a result, I believe that our, the exemption that our current ordinance grants is not permissible. And given the limited number of food vendors that we typically have doing business in town, I'm not sure that it's something that the city needs to regulate. It's something that I think could be reevaluated down the road. But right now, I think that the ordinance that I wrote is overly broad and would, again, the exemption that it, that I included in it. Without that in there, it would have us regulating Boy Scout brat sales on private property, efforts by other fraternal organizations on private property. I think it's too all-inclusive. So that I'm recommending that the city council consider repealing the ordinance.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to our next item, which is a work session. So at this point, the televised portion of the meeting is concluded. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start on the work session, which will be a discussion of the budget for 2014 and the city of Platteville Compl-Plan, Comprehensive Plan Update.